Our meeting to order. Today is Monday, April 13th, and this is a Cedar Rapids Community School District Regular Board of Education meeting along with a work session. Thank you for joining us on this beautiful but windy day. So, to start our meeting, can someone please read the approval of the agenda?
I move that the agenda of May, sorry, Monday, April the 13th, 2015, Board of Education Meeting be approved as set forth, and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Sir, second please.
Second.
Thank you. This is a roll call action. Director Laberty.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Westercamp.
Aye.
Director Anholt.
Aye.
President Meisterlin.
Aye.
Thank you. Dave, I'll turn this over to you for a superintendent report.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. I want to start this evening with just some general comments about the state of funding here in Iowa. We continue to wait on the legislature to establish our funding for next year. I want to publicly say that this is getting very tiresome as we seek to try to plan for next year's instructional program and then staff up to that plan. We don't know where we are with state supplemental aid at this late date, and we're about 16 months behind actually where we are supposed to know it. The law in the state of Iowa is such that it is designed to depoliticize funding of public schools, but it seems that's where we are right now. Would encourage all parents and patrons of the district to educate yourself on what's going on because it will have impact on the school district. We are holding staffing on several positions that are difficult to fill positions pending the outcome of this legislative discussion, and if the outcome of the legislative discussion is not better than the House of Representatives-approved amount, many of those positions will go unfilled, which will result in less expertise in terms of our programming, and less staff, and higher class sizes. So, I want to get that out there. We need the community of interest to galvanize, and would welcome any calls in that regard. Now, I'm pleased to share the fun part of this evening, is a video produced by staff and students at Grantwood Elementary School. It's just a piece of the video, celebrates the importance of test preparation, and really needs no further setup, so let's look at it.
The choreographer, that was really good.
That was good.[274.68][274.68](Laughter). The Grantwood students and staff should be thanked for that. That was a look at a video that they did in preparation for state testing. Next, Iowa BIG will host a Spring Hack-a-Thon on April 17th. The event provides an opportunity for district sophomores and juniors to experience the project and problem-based learning environment of Iowa BIG. After choosing a project that intrigues them, students have the opportunity to spend the day hacking the problem and developing potential solutions or creating something new. For information, please contact the iowabig.org website. The 8th Annual Lace Up for Learning 5K, 10K, and One Mile Fun Run will be held on Saturday, May 9th, at Kingston Stadium. Proceeds go to support the Cedar Rapids Community School District Foundation. Funds provide guest speakers, field trip opportunities, school supplies, and after-school programming within the district. Registration information is available on the foundation's website, which is linked from the district homepage. The district just received a leadership award from Lynn County Board of Health for its partnership in testing schools for Radon, as well as educating staff and parents about Radon and their testing.
He is not here at the moment.
Don't have that plaque yet, okay.
Oh, there's a picture of it, though.
Okay, there we are. It's a great effort on everyone's part, and Lynn County Board of Health should be commended for making arrangements for us to do this round of testing. And just an aside, we came back with no sites exceeding limits, so we were very pleased with the results. Iowa School Public Relations Association has recognized the district with Awards of Excellence, which is their highest award, for several communications, including the Alumni Spotlight, which is a really good one, the Iowa BIG Awareness Postcard, Magnet School introductory video, and our new district website design. So, congratulations, Marsha and team, for those awards. And speaking of Alumni Spotlight, we have another one this evening. We have a rich and diverse group of alumni, and it's always great to see them be recognized.
Carl Cassell was always excited about attending the school, and he credits his teachers in the district for instilling that love of learning in him and for keeping him on track.
Now, for a kid who loved to read, the library was one of my favorite times. That and gym are the two places I had the most fun outside of our normal classroom. I remember every teacher except my kindergarten teacher, specifically Ms. Bader and Ms. Beamer, who, as I was telling my daughter, you don't even remember, understand these first computers that we had, these Apple computers, and I remember the little turtle, the things we had to do on those computers, and how the fun that they had teaching us, but more importantly, how they wrapped their arms around us as students, and how they really, really exhorted me and stayed behind me. They were very integral in helping me love learning and teaching me how to learn. Just learning how to deal and operate in a social context in an academic institution was pretty neat, and teachers held us accountable, and that was a lot of fun.
While in high school, Carl competed on the Jefferson Jayhawk football and track teams. In the classroom, AP English held his attention most closely because of its rigor and because of his own love of reading and literature.
And high school was everything that I thought it would be and more, and really established what I would do afterwards.
According to Carl, from elementary to high school, I was often pushed by my teachers and coaches to be better than I thought I could be. The academics were always challenging and appropriate for the world that I would embark on. The coaches would teach proper technique in athletics, as well as life skills, in order to be a better person.
I wasn't one of your 4.0 students. In fact, I fell right in the middle. I graduated at about the 50% level in my high school class. Loved learning, I just didn't stick to what I was being taught. I wanted to learn everything else, but having them strike the balance of, yeah, you can have your interests, but because this is mandatory in order for you to get to your next level, it is important that you take it seriously.
After graduating from Jefferson in 1992, Carl attended Iowa State University, where he earned a Bachelor of Science degree. He then lived and worked on the East Coast before returning to Cedar Rapids in 2004 as Executive Director of the Jane Boyd Community House. He next served as Executive Director of the Cedar Rapids Civil Rights Commission. Then in 2013, Carl became the Chief Executive Officer of Horizons, a family service alliance. Horizons runs the largest local Meals on Wheels program, and also provides services in the areas of mental health counseling, consumer credit counseling, and family support programs. Carl is also actively involved in the community and serves on the leadership boards of the Cedar Rapids Downtown Rotary, St. Luke's Hospital, and the Greater Cedar Rapids Community Foundation. Carl has served as political commentator and community advocate, and has delivered keynote addresses, teaching seminars, and speaking engagements. He is keenly aware of how our community has been reshaped over time, and is always willing to be a part of the conversation.
I remember being a grant, and being one of only six African-Americans as a sixth grader in my school at the time, and I had two brothers coming behind me, so there were only three other, actually, excuse me, there were six in my grade, and then about six others sprinkled out through our elementary school, a little more at Wilson, and a few more at Jefferson, but when you know everyone by name and know their families, and this is obviously on the west side, then you know there's a small number of individuals who are African-American, or Asian, or Hispanic. It's much different now. As I spend time at Jefferson, I'm just blown away by the amount of diversity, which is a good thing, and I think that has tended to rub people the wrong way because it's not the same. But they don't understand, it's enhancing our community. We have to get to know each and every person one by one. No one is monolithic amongst any group, and if we're unwilling to have those conversations, we're robbing ourselves of the experience of everybody's story, and that's, I think, what I love more than anything, hearing all the different stories of people and how they arrived to where they are.
Carl recognizes that a great deal has also changed in education since he walked the halls of our Cedar Rapids schools. Technology has expanded learning opportunities by providing information at a rapid-fire pace. Even so, excitement for learning remains the key.
I often say, if you can plug it into real life each and every day, to those things that matter, and of course, again, it can't be sort of one-size-fits-all, but if you can stress how all of this will affect their lives later on, and we have even begun to scratch the surface because this technology, as you just said, has started to almost cut the time in half in which it evolves, what they're learning today, or how they're learning today, will be so different even in five to seven years, that it just has to be able to be plugged into the things that they're interested in, and they might change those. But then, you've already, if you haven't mastered it, you've already learned what you're attracted to now, and you can build on that platform going forward.
Carl and his wife, Lenisha, have two children, Lydia Grace and Solomon Joseph. When he isn't working, his focus is always on family.
I love spending time with my wife and family. I spend so much time with all my other things. When I'm home, I am a homebody.
We're so pleased to congratulate district alumni Carl Cassell on his professional career, and to thank him for his service to the community. Thank you, Carl. Another great alum. Okay, now it's time, communications, delegations, and petitions. I do not have any requests to address the board, so we will move into board reports. Any comments? Yes, Nancy?
Well, I just attended the National School Board Conference in Nashville, Tennessee. There were over 8,000 school board members there, so I had an opportunity to meet a lot of folks and to find out what they're doing in their districts. I was fortunate, the track that I followed was the Student Achievement Track, and I was fortunate to meet the authors of some that presented during the conference, which they, I got their books, I got them autographed, and this one is "The Leader's Guide to the 21st Century Education." And then I met another young man, "The Resilience Breakthrough: 27 Tools for Turning Adversity into Action." Enjoyed the conference, ate a lot of good food.[851.73][851.73](Laughter). But it was, and this was my first opportunity to go and to really become engaged and meet a lot of school board members, so I do thank the board and the school for allowing me to attend this conference. It's very helpful.
Thank you.
I also attended, and I'm going to make a presentation next time because I know this meeting might get a little bit lengthy, but it is really, really worthwhile as a board member to go to that because it puts in perspective of where schools are in this nation. Very, very good conference and some good speakers.
Yes.
They talked about some of us older people still have a lot of service.
Right.[899.82][899.82](Laughter).
It did. Jane Pauley, right?
That's right, Jane Pauley, she was there.
Very good.
On behalf of the board. Thank you both for going and attending on our behalf. We look forward to any information that you want to share with us in the upcoming weeks about what you've learned. So, thank you.
Gary?
Yes.
Just from the legislative, I think Dave, Dr. Benson, pretty well summed it up, but I'd just add that I attended also the Iowa State Education Association Annual Delegate Assembly and heard and talked individually with ICA's lobbyists, and it's very evident that the funding is there. They can, they could fund an additional $50 million to put, to make the SSA at 4% a lot of growth. It's just a matter of the will of the legislation to do so. So, again, urge everyone to contact your legislators and continue to put pressure on them. They need to do more than what they've done so far.
Thank you for your comments, Gary. Any other comments? John, did?
I would just add that I was in Des Moines last Monday and had a chance to talk to several of the legislators and also some of the chairs of the education committees, and in addition to our local legislators, it's key that we also contact Governor Branstad. He seems to hold the key to a lot of this right now in the House, and I think that he needs to hear loud and clear that it's not acceptable in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, or anywhere to have the kinds of under-adequate funding that they're proposing and the cuts that will be seen. So, and we're putting out the, you know, the fire here to make sure that everybody around Cedar Rapids knows what's going on, but it's so important to get out there and let others know as well.
Appreciate those comments. Actually, Dave and I had an opportunity last week along with college community superintendent, board president, and Lynn Mars superintendent to talk with Speaker Paulson and Representative Ken Reiser, and my message coming out of that was, please don't let it be zero. I mean, that's where we're at right now, so it's 1.25. We didn't feel that was going to move off that mark much at all, and if they come to a stalemate, it will be zero, zero. So, the impact is tremendous, not just on our district, but every single school district across the state of Iowa. So, please be engaged, pay attention, write them, call them, express your concern about the inadequate funding for public education. A state that's renowned for great education is losing that spot. So, thanks all of us for our effort. Thank you for your efforts, too. Next, I'm going to turn this over to Paul Hayes to talk about the Equity Plan of Work with Edwin Jarvis.
Thank you. As the board knows, Edwin Jarvis has been with us for about a year now, supporting the district in our work around efforts to increase the awareness of equity in our buildings and across the district. One of his areas of focus is to support the work of our manager of student equity, Ken Morris Jr., so I'm going to introduce Ken now, who will set the stage for Edwin's work with the board this evening. Ken?
Thank you, Paul. Can you all hear me okay? All right. Members of the board, I bring you greetings, my family, my lovely wife, Clarice, and my son, Avery. I have the privilege of being able to talk a little about the work that I've been involved when involved in with Mr. Edwin Jarvis of Ed Equity out of San Jose, California. Edwin and I met through Dr. Benson, February 2013, I believe, shortly after I was hired, and through Dr. Benson's wisdom, and his, you know, confidence in my areas of expertise in equity and social justice, but knowing that I had quite a learning curve with regard to how that plays out in the K-12 landscape, he had designed, or had an idea rather, to bring in Edwin to do work in the district, and part of that work was to come on as a coach for myself. And Edwin and I hit it off famously. In fact, you know, he's grown, he's become my mentor, like any good mentor, he's also, he doubles as my tour mentor. So, (laugh) he holds me accountable, and has really helped my growth in this work, you know, over the course of the, you know, little over a year that we've hit the ground running with our diversity committee, so much so that in his presentation, he'll highlight some of the work that he's done with the committee, and we're very excited to share Equity Action Plan that was developed by the diversity committee, as well as some members of the board itself, to really create a really strong map on how we can close some of the gaps that we're, you know, experiencing in our district. So, in addition to the Equity Action Plan, he's also going to share, as a district, we've come up with the Theory of Action, sort of a mission statement, specifically around equity, so that, you know, we live out what it is to be socially just and equitable district. So, at this time, I'm going to stop rambling and ask Mr. Edwin Jarvis to come to the podium.
Good evening, Madam President, board members, Dr. Benson. I'm excited to be here. After having a conversation with Dr. Benson, to kind of like highlight some of the courageous acts that the district has embarked on in regards to making the district inclusive for all kids, to ensure all means all, I would like to spend a little bit of time just kind of sharing who we are as a company, as well as kind of walk through some things that will add more clarity in terms of educational equity. You had two board members go to Tennessee and have good food, but probably the, in addition to having good food, probably just across the nation, the number-one issue that's facing 21st century schools is this whole idea of equity and social justice, and how do we close the multitude of gaps that exist in high-performing schools, districts, and low-performing school districts? I come to you as a practitioner, had the pleasure of being a high school world history teacher, elementary principal, high school vice principal, district office employee, and for, since 2001, the CEO, president of Ed Equity. We have the pleasure of working in 12 states and supporting high-performing school districts and low-performing school districts, improving leadership and instructional practice. And I share that with you because one of the things that we're finding across the nation is that we have focused a tremendous amount of time on educational outcomes for youngsters and less time on the antecedents that has caused the educational outcome. So, as the district and Ed Equity has engaged in this work, we are trying to improve the adult performance so the little kids can show, can show off like they did here. I always say, testing time for little kids is to show off to your teacher how smart you are, how smart you are. So, what I would like to do, and you have a packet of information, is just a couple of artifacts that we have used to support not only the measurable outcomes, because sometimes educational equity becomes a nebulous term, and what does that really look like in a high-performing school district? So, we are using measurable outcomes to identify, how do we get better as a system, as a system? So, what I'm going to do is just kind of walk through who we are, go through the packet a little bit, and walk us through an activity, and I would love to have this be very participatory. So, if you want to ask a question now or before, you know, before the end of the presentation, feel free to, for clarification and just presentation flow, feel free, feel free. So, hopefully, this, you guys do high-tech stuff here, so hopefully I get this thing right. No, I didn't. Okay. One of the things I just wanted to share with you is a quote by Asa Hillier, and this is what we're finding in school districts across the nation, that there's nothing new in education. There's actually nothing new to get African-American kids, Latino kids, poor white kids to learn. There's absolutely nothing new. And I think, Nancy, could I, indicated, this hurdles indicated is the will, and I think Gary indicated, the will to want to take the courageous steps to do the work. So, Asa Hillier talks about, do we have the will to do the work? All we know about education, they work. There's nothing new. Bloom Taxonomy, it's all coming back. Madeline Hunter, everything's coming back. All of these things are coming back like the Afro. No, I'm just kidding. You know, so there's really nothing new in education, is our ability to tackle the hard issues in school. And the hard issue in school is, do we look at every kid with the idea of, I'm going to give them access to unlimited potential in my classroom? That is the will in which we have to kind of, that's our one degree in Cedar Rapids. It's the will to see that every, all means all, all means all. So, Asa Hillier talks about, there are no pedagogical barriers to teaching and learning when adults are made available for youngsters. So, that has been kind of our cornerstone is about, and we're even reading that as a professional read, the will, the will to lead, the skill to teach. So, that is so apropos in the work, okay, in the work. We're one of the nation's premier educational consulting firms that just focus on educational equity. And what do we mean by educational equity is improving the quality of instruction for all kids. Improving the quality of instruction for all kids, which aligns to the instructional vision of the district of the characteristics of effective instruction. So, how do we ensure that every teacher improve their practice that it reaches every single kid in our classroom? And one of the courageous steps that we're taking in Cedar Rapids is that if the data is asking us to have a courageous conversation about black students, we're saying black students. We're saying Latino students. We're saying poor white students. We're saying gifted kids. As I always share in our philosophy, equity doesn't mean black and brown, it means everyone. Because as we start looking at the data across the nation, some of our top kids have regressed to the mean, and they're not bumping up against excellence. So, that's an equitable action that needs to be addressed as well. How do we continue to move our top kids, if you will? So, one of the things that we do is try to eliminate that gap, and the gap isn't comparing black and white, it's comparing kids to excellence, comparing kids to the ceiling, as opposed to racial comparisons. We've been in the business, again, for, since 2001. We've learned some things along the way. We've, we're research-founded, research-based. This work around equity and culture is not a new fad. Old educators and learning theorists like Bogatsky, Piaget, Forstein have actually introduced how kids make meaning, and what we've done is basically utilize what the research has shown to say, how do we get better as an organization? The proof is in the data. What we're finding is, there is a threshold in our organization, and we found that if there is direct services, and we found that direct services around 10 to 11 days of direct service on a campus, we see measurable results. We see measurable results. In regards to really doing the systemic work, as opposed to, I hate to use this term, drive-bys, drive-by professional development, especially around engaging staff around culture, race, and language, could be counterproductive to the culture. So, being able to really engage staffs and allow them to process what it means, as Carl would say, to maximize the diversity in the district. Jefferson looks different than when he went. So, how do we look at Jefferson's difference being a solution as opposed to a problem? And that has kind of been taboo in schools, really having that hard conversation about culture, race, and socioeconomics. So, that whole piece... So that whole piece is what we do and we support through various service models. We have four critical areas that we're working in your district in. Uh, one is, uh, the opportunity to, to coach, uh, Ken is, has been a delight for me. Uh, one of the things he coached me in is that he, he showed me where the barber shop was here, so that's always good. You know, Sweetie Pie is a good place to eat if you haven't gone. No, it's good. So, um, but it gives us an opportunity to have a gradual release plan. My job is to work myself out of a job. If I'm here too long, that means that things are not holding on, if you will. Okay? Not holding on. We're doing site level support in, um, in three schools right now, and that's, uh, Washington High School, Roosevelt, and Wilson, Hoover, in Hoover. Uh, we just finished, uh, just earlier today, um, principal in IDS and counselors training around looking at, how do we operationalize an equity action plan and what is the courage and the steps needed to have these courageous conversations on school sites, um, and still maintain, uh, the culture? I don't say maintain the culture because if we maintain the culture, we're gonna get the same results. How to enhance the culture to make it more culturally inclusive for, for every student, for every student. And, um, which is a delight also is, um, working with your Equity, um, Diversity Committee. And, and being able to walk on campus and giving your community members the language to go in schools to offer positive feedback to what they see. That has been, and I'm gonna say this as a person who travels the nation, not many school districts are having community members walk on campuses and give feedback to, to teachers and administrators. So Cedar Rapids is one of the only few school districts that are courageous enough to allow the community members to walk the halls and provide thank you cards to teachers for best practices being seen. We also have conversations too about what we didn't see, but it's not in a threatening mode. I think Tye was, uh, had an opportunity to, to walk with us, um, and which brings about, you know, how do we get better? How do we get on the ground and, and, and really get better as a school system? Our philosophy on educational equity is that educational equity is the belief that if we have deliberate actions to close the multitude of gaps, that becomes the driving force of the organization. If we know that we have gaps in teaching and learning, student outcomes, how do we action plan that with measurable outcomes? That should be the driving force of the organization. Um, through the strategic plan process, um, as well as the, the formation of the equity plan, um, complements actually the strategic plan. And you have a copy of the Equity Action Plan in your packet that has identified six key areas in which to, uh, support, um, the strategic plan, to support the strategic plan. What do we mean by equity? All right? And I tried to simplify it as much as I can. Again, is giving kids what they need. So as you look at the box here, as we talk about equity, you see three kids trying to look over, uh, to see the baseball game. And if we were engaged in qua, uh, equality, I just see them the same. That would be coined the phrase. I just see them as the same. That means the young, the, the smaller kid would not get access to seeing the game. Does that make sense? As you look at, um, maybe I have to give two boxes to, uh, a student, and I use this phrase quite frequently too. Okay? All the kids are gonna have shoes, but the shoes have to fit. They may be different sized shoes. So as we start to engage in this work, it's called Equity, it, it is around possibly giving kids what they need to gain access to high quality instruction. High quality instruction. Not mediocre instruction. High quality instruction for every kid. So as we start to really wrap our, our conversation around equity, we did about, uh, two hours about clarifying the equity piece so we can go back to the school site and have teachers not question, what is this about? But how do we, how do we make sure that everyone gets access? Everyone gets access. Um, one of the things that we say that's, and this is through the research from Carol Dweck out of Stanford, um, 75% of closing the racial achievement gap in schools, it's mindset. 25% strategies. What I believe in, in the kid is just as important as what I do with the kid. And that work is, is, there's getting some great research out of Stanford about transforming mindset. I think, uh, one of the board members, uh, had a book that talked about student resiliency.
Resilience, yeah.
Student resiliency, and that work about resiliency is critical. How do we have kids, what, do kids even know what effort is in school? You know, so really kind of defining that so the youngsters will know how to replicate resiliency and effort. And do our teachers have resiliency? How do we continue to do that as, as well? Again, 25% mindset, I mean, 75% mindset, 25% strategies. What I believe, what I do. What I believe and what I do. And that conversation about what I believe is, what do I believe about the kids on the west side may be different than the kids on the east side. What do I believe in from those kids who come from the apartment complex and those who come from the gated community? Having our teachers being willing and having our leaders being willing to engage that conversation as a solution and not so much a problem is our one degree. I believe it's, it's, it's our one degree. The conversation I had with, uh, Dr. Benson in Naperville, was in, uh, Naperville, was really around, we are really, really good with 85% to 90% of our babies. We're not as good with maybe 10% of our population. How do we close that gap? How do we close that gap? In addition to keeping the kids hot. Again, definition of equity, giving kids what they need. Giving kids what they need so they can gain access to rigorous content. I don't wanna give kids, I don't wanna love them to hopelessness. I wanna love them to grade level and beyond. Um, grade level and beyond. So that whole idea of, you know, having unlimited expectations for kids, it's really about, how am I gonna prep as a teacher to make sure that I am skilled enough to get my kids there? How do I get my kids there? This is what we say about equity. Equity is the process, equality is the outcome. We want all the kids to see the game. How do we get the kids to all see the game? May be different for certain kids. Okay? May be different for certain kids. And that may be rooted in instructional approach, that may be rooted in after-school tutoring, that may be rooted in, how do I say this? I may have to call on him twice in class or three times or four times. That is what we mean by that additional resource. Based on the, the state of Iowa, resources are not as plentiful, you know, which is, is, um, uh, trying times. Californians been there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, Californians been there, so that's, that's just trying times. So not only we're gonna have to give, give resource, we're gonna have to also continue to make sure that the promising practice that our teachers have, they get replicated. Yeah, get replicated. And that's the great work from the Instructional Division as well. The greatest barrier to learning is not what the student knows, it's what the teacher believes. Greatest barrier to learning is not what the student knows, what the teacher believes. And, um, that's, that's a hard pill to swallow sometimes, if you're, if you're a teacher. Because are you saying that what I believe in you, Edwin, is the most important part of school? That's what the researchers show. The self-fulfilling prophecy, the pick million effect? That's pretty founded research, pretty founded research. Um, that has been kind of our approach, um, of working with the district, but I just wanna share this one thing and I'll open up to, to comments. I just wanna ask the board members this. What happens at 12, 212 degrees? Extra credit if you try. What happens at 212 degrees Fahrenheit? 212 degrees Fahrenheit, something happens.
Water boils.
Water boils, okay? Water boils. What happens at 211? What happens at 211 degrees Fahrenheit? It's just hot.
Yeah.
Okay? It's just hot. And I share this with the Instructional Division. We don't have to transform five degrees. We have to transform one degree. What is that one degree that will change matter in our district? The one degree. 211, we're hot. 212 changes matter. And that changing the matter is our ability and the will to implement equity for all. So I, I just kind of wanna open it up and...
Edwin, I have, uh, I've been quoted as saying, "The teacher leadership, uh, program in Iowa is the most promising educational reform I've, I've seen in my career, uh, going back to, uh, A Nation at Risk." Uh, can you, uh, talk to the board a little bit about the work you see our teacher leaders doing, uh, and, uh, how, uh, your work plays into that?
Absolutely. Um, it's interesting that I shared this morning, one of the, the most promising, uh, among a multitude of promising practices in the district is the teacher leader, the coaching of teachers is one of the strongest in your district. One of the strongest in the state, if not the nation. Our ability to go in classes and coach up.
Hmm.
And one of the things that we would like to, we are supporting the district is, is how do we add a cultural lens to what coaches bring to the classroom as well? So we're mirroring the teacher leader continuum and evaluation to say, not only am I a good practitioner, but I'm also culturally conscious of understanding how culture, race, language interacts in the classroom. So our coaches getting better at, uh, engaging that conversation. They're willing. They're, they're excited by it. Um, it doesn't hurt, uh, and you, and you see your IDS is doing a, a real good job of that.
Questions and comments, John?
Edwin, uh, I, I read through the, uh, evaluations and they're tremendous. I mean, this is great. And I'm assuming that these, these were from the administrators and counselors and there were some questions about how do we get this out to the rest of the staff? So can you just talk to us a little bit more where this is going for the rest of the staff?
Absolutely. This is, it's one day workshop, but we had, um, actually did a great workshop with, uh, with Ralph School at, at Washington as well as Hoover and Roosevelt. So we have those evals, so we're moving the work to ground zero.
Okay.
You know, we're moving the work to ground zero. Um, we wanna go slow to go fast, uh, and then there's capacity issues and stuff like that. But, um, the goal is to support the IDS as, as well as do, I don't wanna say triage, but do targeted schools so we can find some best practices that can be replicated.
And in addition, we will have, um, during our pre-service next, uh, school year, if we, with the calendar just being determined, we, Edwin has, uh, already, he's going to entertain the fact that we would like him here all four days and we would like to get him in front of all teachers in our district. That has not happened yet, so that will happen during pre-service next year.
How's the weather during that? No, just kidding.
Not bad. The, uh, uh, the Theory of Action, uh, and the work that the Equity Committee has done this year, uh, in identifying strands for us to go forward and the accountability structures that are built into that, uh, I'm real excited about that. This is something I, I've been asking for and haven't had it because you've been pushing me as a board for how do we know, what are the steps? How can I as a board ask intelligent questions about where we're going? And I think that construct will provide that.
Nancy?
Uh, you had mentioned that you provide site level support. Could you share with me a little bit what, what that entails?
Absolutely. Um, based on the school's improvement plan, they have certain goals that they've identified to help move their school along and, and, and close any gaps that they may have, is that we work with the principals in developing, uh, what are some key things within their site plan that we can support with professional development? So that work is really around the professional development, either with their IDS and coaching or working with the entire staff, uh, in an in-service. I know we've done a couple of in-service where we've had the entire Washington staff, actually, um, in, in, um, in training and, and lesson design and, and how do you infuse, um, how do you, how do you design culturally responsive lessons for all kids? And more importantly, just the dialogue of new information. Because being able to have conversation about culture and equity and race, that needs to be processed. I'm, I'm not sure how much practice Iowans have at that, you know, in a school setting? I'm not sure. I'm sure we've had some conversations, but in a school setting, what impact does that have is a critical part of the professional development. So we create a safe environment for teachers to not know, but not be okay not knowing.
Okay, other questions? John?
So, a lot of this obviously has impact in the schools and the students, the teachers, the, the staff, but what about the family and the parents? This is the question that we keep getting asked all the time. What role do we have in helping them and bringing them into this process? And what can we expect to give to them or help them in their journey through understanding, you know, their, their children's success in school?
Absolutely. In the Equity Action Plan, there's a strong community parent, uh, piece of where we're reaching out and developing structures, safe structures. So when the parents do come, they're not intimidated by the system, if you will. And how do we, how do we create different type of parent satellites, parent involvement satellites at our school site? So now not only your typical PTA parent shows up, it's really a, a cultural mix of parents that can participate with the principal and be able to have things met. So that's part of, a critical part of the Equity Action Plan that will be rolling out. And then that part will be adopted by the school sites.
Great, thank you.
Other comments or questions? So how do we drive this into teacher prep in, at the college level? I mean, this is such an important topic that it should be part of our regular, uh, courses study for aspiring teachers.
The ivory tower, huh? No, just kidding. Um, this is what we've done in, this is what we've asked in Georgia. This is what we've asked in Georgia. If we don't somewhat adjust to the teacher efficacy rubric of what we require teachers to come as part of their skill sets or their tools, they'll, we'll always have to do that prep work here. So what we're doing is supporting, um, uh, in Georgia, the, the university is saying, can we take a look at your prep courses and how do we add culturally responsiveness as a critical component there? So when they come, we're not starting at zero if they're coming from, you know, Morehouse or Spelman or something of that nature. So, um, teacher prep folks, how do I say this? There's a lot of books out there, they haven't, um, strongly wanted to modify their current way of doing business. Not right now, so it's kind of almost up to us to add that lens. And then we get, you get, we get these youngsters who are coming to us, just blown away from being in Iowa but being in an urban Iowa school, if you can call it urban.
I, yeah, I, I just think that's such an important conversation because are you telling me that across the nation in all teacher prep programs, they omit this type of instruction?
It's, it's not, how do I, I don't wanna say it's omitted, but it's not explicitly stated.
Okay.
You know, so what will happen, they'll have a course that says all kids, and then that's it. As opposed to really explicitly stating, this is how you're gonna leave here being culturally competent as an instructor. Uh, we're, we're, as a nation, we're still kind of struggling with that.
Uh, thank you for your work in the district. I did attend a meeting in December. I know Nancy was on the, uh, Diversity Committee the first year it was formed, and Rosenthal, who's joining us later tonight, is currently on that committee as well. So I know you're at it, I know you're working on it. Uh, can any of our board members do an Equity Walk with you? And are there any upcoming in this rest of the school year? And are there any upcoming in this rest of the school year? May sixth at Franklin. So can we join you? What time is that?
Could I say no? No, just kidding. Of course.
We won't support you.
Just one thought on this, you know, we do have some power as the Urban Education Network. We, we as a school, you know, community within the state of Iowa have the same sort of needs, what we're talking about in Cedar Rapids, Iowa. And I'm wondering if, maybe this is happening, but we need to pull together Edwin and some of the other school leaders across the state in urban districts and our teacher prep program leaders and say, we expect change. We're, we're your client. We're going to hire your product, your student teachers. This is what we expect of them as urban districts in Iowa.
And I know that the Department of Education is the one that puts a stamp on approval for teacher prep programs across the state. I think that Dr. Buck maybe will help us facilitate that conversation at the department level. So, yeah, we're, we're all for that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Safe travels back to California.
I'm here for a little bit.
Okay.
I brought the California weather, I tell you.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, it's great.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, I'm going to turn this over to Dave Benson to talk about the fifteen sixteen school calendar.
Well, as everyone knows, we've been struggling with fifteen sixteen school calendar now for, since October. The governor just a cup, a day ago, signed the new legislation which calls for the start of school to be no sooner than August twenty-third, which next year is a Sunday, so that reverts to August twenty-fourth. We have published this calendar and published it. And we have, as late as Monday, worked on, a week ago Monday, worked on that with tremendous input from our teachers and the CREA leadership. Tanya, who sits on the administrative cabinet, as well as other members of the cabinet. And we've, we tweaked some things. We're ready to now publish this. The modified Taylor calendar had to change because one of the elements of the law stated that you can't have a longer period than six weeks break to have a modified calendar. We had six weeks and three days. So we had to do a little quick modification. But basically, the philosophy of the calendar is the same that you saw in October. It's driving the current calendars for fifteen sixteen. And we will publish those. They are on the website already. And then have a public hearing, next board meeting, and an approval process so that we can meet the requirements of the law. The good news for our district patrons, the start and the end has shifted a little bit, but the breaks, in terms of winter break, in terms of Thanksgiving break, in terms of spring break, they have remained the same. So those patrons that went ahead and made plans for next year on the basis of the breaks. The other good news is we will now have graduation sap. We'll enter into a contract with our sister school districts and the cell center. So we can now publicize graduation, you know, assuming board approval in two weeks. And that's always a consideration for our individuals who are seniors and their parents and extended family that we have. A, we have the venue that can accommodate everybody and that we know what those dates are and what the cycle is so that people know what their travel plans can be. So I'm excited about actually getting a calendar finished. We'll bring it to you. We've got two more weeks for patron input. And I would certainly encourage anybody who has input to please get that to us. We'll give it every consideration and we'll bring back a calendar for publication and approval in two weeks.
Questions or comments from the board? I just want to make sure staff has seen this calendar and make sure that we allow for input. I'm sure you have, and I'm not trying to insinuate that you haven't. But I know that I've heard from several teachers on some of these issues. I know you've made some adjustments. So I just hope you continue to make sure that staff has that opportunity for continued suggestions. So, okay, thank you very much. Glad we have a calendar in place. Now is the time for several public hearings. And the first one is going to be the fourteen fifteen budget amendment. I ask at this time. What Laurel's whispering over here is that the time for publication of the public hearing actually starts at five thirty and it's five twenty-seven. So if anyone comes into the room after this time, I will certainly allow them to address the board on this issue. So as I said, now is the time and place for a public hearing on the budget amendment. I ask at this time if anyone in the public would like to address the board. Laurel, have you received any communications?
I have received no communications on this topic.
Okay, seeing no interest, that closes out the hearing for the budget amendment. The second public hearing we have is the fifteen sixteen budget. Again, I ask at this time if anyone would like to address the board regarding the fifteen sixteen budget. Okay, Laurel, let the record reflect that no one has addressed the board. And have you received any communication regarding the budget?
No written communication regarding the budget.
This closes out the public hearing for the fifteen sixteen budget. Next is the instructional.
I have a question on that. Can we close it out until five thirty?
Yeah, if anyone comes in after that, we'll certainly address.
So we're closing out, but we're really not.
Five thirty.
That's all I want to be clear on. So if somebody comes in, they can.
Address our board on any of the public hearings that I'm conducting now.
All right, just clarifying.
The next one is the Instructional Support Levy Program. At this time, I ask if anyone would like to address our board regarding the public, excuse me, the Instructional Support Levy. Again, let the record reflect, at this point, no one has addressed our board. Laurel, have you received any communication regarding the Instructional Support Levy?
No, I have not received any communication.
Okay, this closes out that public hearing. The next one is the two thousand fifteen ADA compliance projects. Again, this is a public hearing. I ask if anyone would like to address our board to come forward now. Laurel, have you received any communications regarding the compliance projects?
No written communication has been received.
Okay, so at this time, we'll close that public hearing out as well. The last one is Harrison Elementary School Site Improvements. Again, would anyone like to address our board at this time? Yes, Larry Winklowski?
Yeah, Lawrence Winklowski, four two three four Morel Road, Northeast. On December twelfth, twenty fourteen, this board approved as part of their consent agenda, the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen physical plant and equipment projects. The plan provided forty-five thousand dollars for asphalt and concrete work at Harrison. But the bid you're going to vote on tonight is almost four hundred thousand dollars, around three hundred fifty thousand dollars more. So what school projects are going to be cut out of this since there's not enough money to cover them all? And have we notified these schools that they're not going to get what they're expecting to have accomplished this year? And I'm assuming that since the, it was never brought up that five hundred thousand dollars that we gave to the city was going to go over to Silo instead of Pebble. I'm assuming that's still a Pebble thing. Because between the four hundred thousand dollars for this project and the five hundred we gave to the city, Harrison's already exceeded its ten-year estimated Pebble fund request. Yeah, I realize this is part of a plan no one wants to publicly talk about. And I know a lot of teachers in the district are unaware of. And the plan to use the Northwest Rec Center as a new Harrison gym, turn Harrison gym into a daycare and build additional classrooms. I have several concerns about this project. This is supposed to be a joint project. We basically gave the land to the city. We gave money to the city to help build the center. From the plans I saw, the rec center is going right over the parking lot that we have to pay to replace. I think this is a little skewed against us. The money has, or the city has relocated money to relocate traffic cams, give development discounts, but cannot afford, afford to fund their own rec center. Everyone needs to wake up about this. And despite everyone's optimistic view, the majority of the city and the school district will never use this rec center. I feel that we're using education money for economic development of the city. And the money would be better off spent for, throughout the district. Harrison's only five percent of our students. As many of you are aware, I grew up in Chicago most of my life. And I'm from a state that has a prison dedicated to ex-governors. And when government changes plans and they don't make it publicly, typically what I'm used to is that nothing good happens of it. And when, and it usually ends up costing taxpayers more money or somebody else financially benefits down the road that's not involved in this process and that. Another concern I have is from the comment I heard a few months ago that we may be closing another school. Since the district determines which schools to close based on how much money it will cost to repair the school and bring it up to the certain standard, is the district minimizing repairs to some schools so it can make it more favorable to close a particular school in the future? How does the money we spend on individual school tie back to our diversity issues? And one last concern I have is about the parking lot and rec center project, how it'll affect the students when school starts. From what I've seen about public projects in this area, they are never finished before school starts. Completion dates must be part of any contract if you approve one. I also have several other thoughts, but, and they won't add to this conversation. So those are pretty much my concerns and that, so.
Thank you for your comments. Any other patron wishing to address this board regarding this public hearing? Laurel, did you receive any written communication regarding the Harrison Elementary School Site Improvements?
I received no written communication regarding Harrison.
Okay, thank you. That closes out that public hearing. It's now five thirty-four and I don't believe I've seen anyone enter this room. Is that correct? Other than Ann, Ann Rosenthal. Thank you for coming. Okay, so we're going to move on to consent agenda. And before I accept a motion, I ask if anyone would like to pull anything for separate consideration. Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to accept the consent.
I move, I move to approve the consent, consent agenda.
Second, please. This is a roll call action due to the personnel report. Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
Director Laberty?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Hamholtz?
Aye.
President Meisterling? Aye, thank you. Next, Steve, I'd like you to go ahead and talk about the renewal of the Specialty Underwriters Equipment Breakdown Insurance Program.
Thank you, President.
Yes.
This is a recommend, recommend. Second year of equipment breakdown insurance project. We spoke a few years ago regarding this. Again, it's program that provides.
Oh, we could hear you, but apparently other people couldn't.
Hearing that, of course.
I'll just start again. Sorry. This is a, this is a product that is a toward insurance product to cover breakdowns of qualifying equipment. And its financial underpinnings are very, very profound to the district. This is a vehicle that provides for coverage paid for with management fund dollars transferred into miscellaneous income for the general fund. This is going to be approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of income to the general fund in fiscal sixteen. It is a part of our budget equation. So that has to be, it has to be said. It is sort of what it is at this point. So I'm happy to answer questions that you may have about the ongoing program.
Questions or comments? Yes, Ann?
Yeah, I, I made these comments a year ago and I'll make them again tonight. This may not be the most efficient financial vehicle to transfer resources to the general fund. But when we have a budget unspent balance of under, well under five percent, we're about two and a half to three percent right now at our unspent balance. It's very, very narrow. It is our duty and obligation to bring before the Board of Education anything that can provide resources to the school district's general fund. This is clearly one of those items. Is it better than it was last year when we brought the initial proposal? Clearly, yes. And that's why I provided the two-year summary of where we are currently in fiscal fifteen and where we are under the proposal for fiscal sixteen. And I'm looking at the, it would be in your handout that you have that provides this comparative, comparative analysis. The premium is down by a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. The estimate for claims is up by a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. And so we're looking at a sixty-nine percent return versus the forty percent return of the current program. So it's significantly better. And it's going to be better because of their increasing the per-hour labor costs that they're going to be reimbursing the school district from seventy-five to ninety-five dollars per year. And frankly, we're doing a better job of finding the things that qualify and getting them into the queue. It's a learning curve like anything that's brand new. And that information is also the first bullet point in your, in your handout. That we've improved our claims on a per-month basis from thirty-one in the first quarter of the fiscal year that we're in to a hundred and seventy-nine per month. And this trend will continue going forward. So now we know how to yield back a return on this program. The insurance company has a better understanding of the scope of the program. So the premiums are more competitively priced. Their risk is diminished because now they know what they're dealing with. So the premiums have declined. So I, I will stop there.
Yes, Alan?
Of course, I was very supportive of this a year ago because I thought it was very creative. It was a way to come up with a way to move us in a position, to get us out of a jam, I guess is how I put it. But what I like to fact is in another year, based on what you just said, Steve, was, you know, we could be at zero as far as cost to the district because we're clicking down there. And, and we could, you know, find the proper things to apply to the insurance, which is what we talked about before, that there could be some learning curve. And we'll get through that. And so I really appreciate you doing this. I understand it's a net cost to the district, but at the same time, it, it creates opportunity.
Okay, Ann?
I'm not sure that you answered the question about what's the implication of the general fund. I mean, could you put it in terms of if we don't do this, then we're going to be not hiring X positions? Or, I mean, what's the impact to the classroom and education?
We, we spend eighty-two to eighty-three percent of our general fund on staff. And we have a budget, as Dr. Benson too alluded to at the beginning of our board meeting, that is still in a state of flux. We do not know what the SSA or State Supplemental Aid is going to be. We know that it's a range of somewhere between the house position of one and a quarter percent and perhaps the, the Senate compromise position that split the difference between one and a quarter and four percent, two and five eighths percent. We know that this is a very small level of growth. We're looking for all of the resources that we can find. Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars divided by seventy-seven thousand dollars for an average teaching position gives you the impact of what we would do absent this program. It would increase the pressure. We would have to look for savings in staffing because that's where we've already picked our low-hanging fruit from our budget equation. It would be a reduction of staffing.
So it's basically, it's, it's about six positions?
Yes.
Okay. I just want it, not just for me, but for anybody else who's listening, I want it to be in terms that people can understand. Because I don't, I guess, Ellen and I respectfully disagree. It won't go to zero or the insurance company's not making money.
No, it will not go to zero.
So it's always going to cost us something to do this.
There will always be a margin of profit to the insurance company to provide the toward insurance product. It will never be zero. It would be potentially zero, but if it happened frequently, the insurance company would no longer be in business. We wouldn't have a product offering like this.
And then this still has no impact on our overall property tax rate?
The budget that we have for fiscal '16 incorporates all of these things within it.
And the fiscal '16 rate is still the same as the fiscal '15?
The fiscal '16 rate has been, and we can certainly talk about this during the, it all ties together. We're at 8 cents on the published rate higher than the current levy rate of $15.48.
Okay.
And the reason for that is because of the strategy of using 4% in state supplemental aid growth, which caused the levy rate to rise by that 8-cent differential. That is as high as we can go. If we settle at something less than 4% SSA, the levy will drop. And the break even is 2.5%. If we have an SSA of 2.5%, the levy rate will hit exactly where it is today, marking the third consecutive year of $15.48, including this insurance product.
Sorry, I have one more question.
Sure.
Is there, since we don't know this supplemental state aid yet, is there, does this need to be decided today? Or if, is it, is it irrespective of what the legislature decides? So that's the other question is, do we need to decide this? Is there any advantage of waiting till we know what our...
There's no pressure to, to, to put the board, the board in a corner, so to speak, with this issue, with this item. There's no urgency of approving this tonight. We can take this up and look at this again in the future if that's the wish of the board. We can certainly do that. The, the budget, the fiscal '16 budget must be approved tonight. That is an absolute. But this component within the budget is not essential.
Gary?
I just have a, I have a concern or a problem that we talk about equating this $450,000 to staff. And you're, the discussion would be that we would be able to save six jobs, seven jobs, teacher positions by doing this. When we don't receive the money is an ongoing. I mean, we're, you're going to, we have no assurance that it's $450,000. That's, that's a guesstimate. To build, to build jobs or secure jobs on, on something that is nebulous, that it might be a good educated guess, but we, we don't know for sure. What happens if it isn't $450,000? Where do we make up, if we've based a budget and saving jobs if it doesn't, if it doesn't amount to $450,000, how do we make up the shortfall then as a result?
My response to you, Director Anholdt, is that this is far less nebulous than it was a year ago. And I wouldn't even say it was nebulous a year ago. This is, in terms of the science of forecasting, a far firmer number today based upon experience of the insurance company, based upon our experience of utilizing this product and our system that we've put in place to capture qualifying expenditures under the program. $321,654 is the current prediction from the insurance company. And they've got this down pretty tight now. And so it is a range of 400 to $500,000 when I asked Jose McFarland to come up with an estimate of what he believed based upon his experience in this district where we're going to be in fiscal '16. So I think that it's, I think that, that there's a pretty high interval of confidence here between the 400 and $500,000, that that's where we're going to end up at the end of the day.
I, just the comment that I voiced it last year, and I will this year. I just, because of inadequate state funding, we are left to do these kinds of maneuvers in order to, to ensure what's best for kids. And I, I don't think it's, if the state were just adequately funded, we wouldn't be in this situation.
Okay, Dave, did you have some comments?
Well, I don't see that we're going to know anything more in two weeks or four weeks that's going to impact this particular decision. We've entered into this road, and I concur with Director Anholdt. It's very unfortunate that our support level from the state is inadequate and that we are doing these kinds of things to generate revenue in our general fund budget, which supports our instructional program. SSA, whether it's zero, one, or two, is, is really not going to impact this particular item on the budget. We're going to, we're going to rely on this item.
Any other comments? Keith?
I have a question about, have we looked at other companies? Are there other companies do this to sure that we're getting the best deal there? And I did notice the premiums have come down. Was that based upon their worst research?
It's, the premiums have come down because there's less risk to the insurance company because now they know the true scope of what they're dealing with. Does that make sense? Now they know their experience. They know the kinds of claims that the district is submitting on an ongoing basis. Is there competitive pressures on SU, specialty underwriters? Frankly, I wish there were. We're always looking to have leverage when we're negotiating a deal with a provider of any product, including insurance. But I can tell you, and I won't tell you the name of the local company that came to me and offered an equivalent program only to find out that it wasn't a true toward insurance product. It wasn't, it wasn't certified by the state insurance commissioner. And the Department of Education said absolutely no, you can't use this. So at this time, right now, this is the only product that we have that meets the toward criteria that allows for the management fund to be levying and paying for these costs with the general fund to receive the reimbursement.
If I recall correctly, aren't there a number of school districts across the state that are employing the same method for funding?
Yes, and it's growing.
And it's growing.
Yes, Davenport now is the most recent UEN school district that is implementing this program.
Okay, the other question I had was, who else is responsible for making a claim? One person, 10 people, anybody?
We have a team.
Okay.
That meets initially bi-weekly. Every other week, we sat down with representatives of food nutrition, technology, buildings and grounds, custodial and grounds, purchasing department. And we look through as a team every other week on the list of things that we came up with on conference call with representatives of Home, not Homes Murphy, specialty underwriters, and, and Jester Insurance Services out of Des Moines. Every other week, we had the conversation. We learned what we were doing wrong, and we kept improving what we were doing to do it right. And we used the right language with the claims that we made. Everything is funneled to one location. All of the spokes of the wheel go to the center, and that's our buildings and grounds department to Lisa Carney, our secretary, who supports the initiative administratively. And we have a direct connection then to send this list back to specialty underwriters after we've scrubbed through it with our, formerly our bi-weekly meetings, and now they're each month. We, we sit down and talk.
Okay, so your learning curve went from 31 per month to 179 per month. Is that number going to continue to grow or hang around at 179?
Well, I think it's a natural curve that's probably going to flatten out. I think that we're, we're up to speed. We're up and running now. And, no, I don't see that that's a lineal pattern at all.
Okay, any other additional comments or questions? Okay, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the proposal from specialty underwriters to renew the district's equipment breakdown insurance program for fiscal year 2015-2016 at a cost of $653,350. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Same sign?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next, I'm going to turn this over to Dave to talk about resolution to participate in the ISL, Instructional Support Levy.
We have had a public hearing on the resolution to participate in the ISL for the next 10 years. Would recommend the board adopt the resolution as presented.
Any questions or comments regarding the Instructional Support Levy? Seeing none, can someone make a motion to approve that resolution?
I move that the board approve the resolution as printed in their agenda.
Sir, second, please.
Second.
All action? Director Witt? Director Laberty?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Anholdt?
Aye.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
President Meisterling? Aye. Okay, next, I'll turn it over to Steve Graham to talk about the budget amendment resolution. Nope, yes.
Just a quick comment. Again, this is something that we do each year. This has no impact on local property taxes at all. We simply amend the budget to provide for the changing landscape of the budget as we, as we move forward. So I would just ask that the board consider its approval.
Questions or comments from the board?
I got one.
Yep, Alan.
Which is probably a silly question, but this approves the budget amendment has something to do with the supplement of, or the funding from the state. No effect.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments? It's recommended the Board of Education approve the fiscal year 2014-2015 budget amendment. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Okay, next, we'll talk about the 15-16 certified budget. Dave?
Yes, the 15-16 certified budget principles have been covered in several meetings leading up to this by Steve Graham. Those principles will result at a 2.5% SSA with a stable tax rate. The tax, the only rate under this approval, the tax rate would be higher is if the legislature did not approve any SSA and that we were under strictly the budget guarantee, which is all local property tax. And in our resolution, we have accounted for that possibility. So with that, the administration recommends approval of the 15-16 certified budget as published.
John?
Just to clarify, if the legislature does nothing, they say zero, we're not going to deal with it this year, then local property taxes will likely go up to meet our needs.
Local property taxes would go up to pay for 1% budget authority.
The published rate of 1556 cannot be exceeded.
Yep.
Bottom line. But within that, if it is zero, we will be on the budget guarantee. And the 1% growth that we do realize will be paid for by local property taxes to the tune of $1.2 million, all included in a levy rate of $15.56.
And that includes corporate and personal?
Income.
Income or property tax? Is it just property tax?
It is all property tax.
All property tax, okay. Commercial, yeah.
Okay, other questions or comments? Yes, Keith?
If we don't get it next year, the budget guarantee is no more. So we would really be in a very difficult situation.
That's correct.
Pickle jar right now, regardless, but yeah. Yep, even worse. Yep, John?
I have a question about this. So the legislature...
Is in essence breaking the law by not giving us our SSA in time by the law. Can we, does school districts sue the state of Iowa for inadequate funding of our kids' education because of this? Is that, is that even an option that we would have? I mean, we're looking at charging Cedar Rapids School patrons and corporations over $1 million if they don't come through with this.
There's no compliance element to the state statute. I think the statute was written with an understanding that there was a good intention to de-politicize school budgets. That has not happened, and we are politicized at this point. So there's no enforcement mechanism, no penalty written into the law. Now, whether or not as schools we could litigate school finance on an adequacy basis, that's a different issue and would take an Iowa constitutional lawyer to, to answer. I really, I hesitate to speculate on that.
It might be something that some of us may want to bring up with, with some of our state associations to see what we can do collectively if this doesn't start moving forward.
Okay, any comments? If not, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the proposed budget, which includes a district levy rate for fiscal year 2016 of 1556, and approve the fiscal year 2016 budget guarantee resolution. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, next, we are going to move into an exempt session to discuss strategy for negotiations. So our regular meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.